Okay, welcome back to our work session of Tuesday, September 26. We're just continuing what we just had a joint meeting with the CHC. So we are going to open tonight's work session with a discussion of the NG zero legislation on 50 North Greeley, the environmental determination and the draft resolutions, which everyone should have. Joe, you were gonna make copies, you know?
It's in your habit. If you have a blank one, yes, I have it.
Do we have the agenda?
I don't have a hard copy.
You need a hard copy?
I gave you.
He gave it to me.
Oh, I haven't. You can give me one of mine. I brought it.
So, okay, so how do you want to proceed? Eric, do you want to walk us through this? Sabrina, do you want to walk us through it? Hi Sabrina. I think you probably should.
I'm happy to walk everybody through it. Which one do you want to start with? You want to start with the secret resolution?
Sure.
Yeah, why don't we do that first because that'll be the first thing you.
Okay, I do want to make note. I do want to make note that, you know, we did include information in the negative declaration regarding the phase one site analysis that was done under the land section that we had discussed last time we met to go through the negative declaration. So that is pretty much the only change that was made to the negative declaration. You will see in the resolution, I can go page by page, there's nine pages of this resolution. And it very much summarizes the beginning of the negative declaration where we start talking about the first whereas, what this is all about, the application was submitted, when it was submitted. You know, the origin of the legislation, how many times we revise the legislation, all those important dates are put in the second whereas clause. By all means, if I am going through this and you have questions. It's okay, if you have questions as I'm going through this, please stop me. You know, so the first page really is, this was the start of the application. You'll see at the the last whereas clause in the resolution really gives some specificity as to what the legislation is saying. The bullets reflect to the site size requirements, the number of bedroom limitations, the amount of affordable housing that's in the code, undergrounding of utilities. So this is the specificity on the bottom of page one, the top of page two of the legislation, the heightened energy requirements, energy conservation requirements, the heightened carbon less components. So that is really important to put the framework of the type of legislation you are, or the special permit, what you're trying to achieve through the special permit. The next whereas clause on the top of page two really talks about the application or the concept plan that has been proposed by the applicant and the 50 units, just going through the different composition of what that project is. And then there's another whereas clause that follows the first one that talks about the affordable housing and the increase of affordable housing in 12%.
Okay, Sabrina, you're going pretty fast, we have a lot of pages, we're flipping through.
Seventy eight, page seventy eight.
Yeah, no, I know, so I want to stop there and I want to ask you whether that whereas clause with the, on the third bullet point with the AFFH units, does that reflect what the applicant is going to do?
Nope, that comes later on. That comes later on, you have to understand that the seeker determination has to walk through the process that the town walked through with the applicant. The legislation currently talks about an increase from 10% to 12% with a 2% allocation for workforce housing. That's what the legislation says.
That's less than what the applicant?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Bear with me, bear with me. This is, think of, think of your resolution like a story, okay? We're at the beginning of the discussion and we're going to get to the end. The there's another whereas clause after the AFFH that talks about special provisions to reflect essential features, characteristics, exterior dimensions and articulation of the proposed development, the building and the site layout. This is really trying to tie this resolution to those concept plans. And then we further what that concept plan reflects. It reflects the intent of the NG zero special permit legislation and it talks about those concept plans being attached to the environmental determination that is part of this resolution. It talks about in the next whereas clause, if there's an alternative development plan, it would also be required to adhere to the high performance net zero carbon emissions criteria as listed in the special permit legislation. And it has to meet all those environmental standards. So it's not just somebody else can come in after this is adopted and a special permit is granted and say, now we're going to change this. Okay, it has to adhere to the characteristics that are explained throughout the legislation. And Eric, by all means.
Yeah, Sabrina, yeah, one other important point on that with the alternative plan, because the proposed action is the approval of the legislation and then there's a concept plan on top of it, which you're reviewing for environmental review is, you know, for its environmental impacts. But if there is an alternative development plan that comes in, right, that this plan somehow goes away, which was the concern, I heard the board saying at the last meeting significantly. As Sabrina said, they'd have to meet all the requirements of the underlying legislation, which are significant environmental improvements. And we talk about, and you talk about the development of the site through the concept plan, but they'd also have to meet the general conditions for a special permit, which are also, so they have to come forward with a special permit application. And then you have certain requirements in section 60 dash 430B, one through five of the town zoning code. Those provisions really talk about, you know, some specific requirements that have to be met by any development plan that's granted a special permit. It includes, does this nature, does the nature of the building, you know, impact the ability to develop the other, you know, neighboring properties? How does it impact that? How is it, you know, you have to address parking and how it addresses parking. So all those general conditions, and I believe I cite them in one of the, in one of the resolutions, I know I cited them verbatim. So that really gives this board a lot of discretion. If a new special permit application comes in, it doesn't, that materially changes what's in your concept plan now, that gives you a lot of discretion to say, well, we want you to change the appearance of this building because we think it does impact some of the ability to address neighboring properties. We think it does have impacts on streetscape, we think it does have an impact on, you know, traffic that needs to be addressed here. Those are all part of your general conditions. So that, I think the concern that you had that while there's a possibility that they're not going to come in with a concept plan as part of the special permit that matches up with this particular one, you're going to be able to address it through the special permit. And honestly, if there's a material change to this plan, there may be a new secret review that's done or a further secret review that's done with respect to any material changes to this concept plan.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sorry. Just one quick question. Can we put something in here, I didn't see it in here, that just says, you know, for the avoidance of doubt, the legislative intent is that you are going to build something substantially similar to exhibit A and attach a copy of it.
Yeah, I was gonna ask something along those lines. Did we decide, wait, one second Sabrina, did we decide that we could not be attaching the concept plan to the actual legislation? I don't, I don't recall.
Not the legislation, but we do attach it to the.
Yeah, I knew the resolution, but I didn't remember.
It is attached to the resolution, it's attached to the resolution through the environment.
I know, I know, what I'm asking is, did we determine that we could not attach it to the legislation?
We can't attach the concept plan, so you have to design something similar to this concept plan.
Okay, so that was a no, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Right, that, we can't require everyone, you know, for this particular site to build this particular concept plan.
But the tools are there to prevent something.
Substantially different, right? Right, or something could be substantially different that you may like more than this, you know.
But if the picture is in here.
Right, you have the authority as the, as the board reviewing the special permit. Somebody comes in that's materially different than that concept plan that you feel doesn't meet the standards of the, either the legislation or the general conditions, you can deny it. Or you can say you have to change it in order to meet that.
But even if we like, even if we like something that's different, we may still need a new secret analysis.
You may still, yes, because there may be, there may be impacts. Right, there may be impacts that, if there's a material change, you'd probably have to do a further secret review of any special permit at that point.
And what's the definition of a material change in that circumstance? Is it, would it rise to the level of a change of materiality in a secret analysis?
It really, it's really based upon the individual plan, you sort of, it's a judgment call by the planning department, by your consultants, by your legal team and by you, you know, based upon, you know, whether or not it's material, you know, if it, it's not.
It's just our judgment.
It's, a lot of it's a judgment call, yes, there's.
It's very precise, I mean, I always worry about litigation and what, let's.
Right, but that's part of what, but you have a lot of discretion under the special permit. You're being reviewed under the arbitrary and capricious standard. So your analysis of what is or what is not material will be reviewed under that as well.
But the board should keep in mind that obviously the plan is going to change because this is a concept plan and once you get to site plan approval, you know, based on what the fire department says, maybe the, you know, driveway needs to be made a little wider or they need to figure out where the air conditioning units are going, you know, so obviously there are going to be changes. There are things that aren't addressed in a concept plan, they're addressed in a site plan review, that's why we have site plan reviews. But the difference is materiality, if all of a sudden they came a site plan review with a totally different building, that's where we could say, no.
Let's even make it a little more simple. Let's say they decide to put in boilers, oil boilers instead of using electricity. That is a material change.
I think that was pretty obvious.
And that violates the legislation.
Yeah, but that gives you, that gives you the sense, like it doesn't meet with the intent of the legislation.
But I just wanted to be clear that of course there are going to be changes, that's what site plan approval is.
It's really going to be the gray areas.
It's, yeah, you can never forge a law, there's always.
I don't think there's anything really do.
Right.
But I just wanted to make the board clear that because you're the entity that, you know, who's hearing the special permit slash site, slash site plan, you have a lot of discretion to say, you know what, this changed, we don't like it, we want you to do something different. And if they say no, as long as you have a basis for doing that, you know, there's going to be, you know, they can't either say no or you're going to issue a denial based on that.
Have you looked at the case law on this? Would you have examples, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, you may not, not right now, but I.
I mean, the case law is all based upon individual circumstances. Oh, well, what is arbitrary and capricious, where you just ignore factual, you know, you ignore, you know, there's an expert report that there is no contrary, you know, that says there's going to be a traffic impact and the town doesn't have its own reporter, or you haven't had, or the applicant hasn't put in a traffic report that rebuts that to some extent or something, to that effect. That's where you have a real arbitrary and capricious standard. Or there's clearly a, one of the areas under secret hasn't been studied, that could be arbitrary and capricious.
Or they changed the color of the building and we said, forget it, we don't like that anymore and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, even something, but even something like that, you have a fair amount of discretion to say, we don't like the color of that building.
No, 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 I was wondering what's actually in the case law. We can say a lot of.
I mean, arbitrary and capricious, there's so much case law out there, it's really on a case by case basis. And, but it's so hard to get some, again, you have to really ignore something or completely not address it to be considered arbitrary and capricious. Courts, you know, all the case law says that really boards making these type of decisions have a significant amount of latitude and discretion on, you know, on their approaches. That's the case law with respect to land use applications. There are times, you know, if you miss it, if you completely ignore, you know, a particular area under secret, that's when you end up in trouble. Where there's something you haven't addressed at all that's been brought up, that's where you could run into trouble. But according, if there's two experts saying, hey, one says traffic's okay, one that says it doesn't and the town board agrees with the one that says there is none, that's not a basis really for the court for overturning, you know, a decision that says, hey, there's no environmental impact with respect to traffic. You know, that's the way the courts look at that type of situation.
Seems pretty clear.
You know, that's the best I can, you know, give you. And really would have to be, if a new special permit application came in, you'd have to dive in. And again, Sabrina's office and your legal counsel and, you know, any outside planning consultants that you have would have to give you their opinion as to whether or not something's material or there's a basis for requiring the applicant to make a modification under those circumstances.
My understanding is that pretty soon after this legislation, assuming it is approved, that a site plan application will be submitted. And given the amount of money they have spent on this to date, I can't imagine just realistically that they're going to want a chance, starting this process over again by coming up with a completely different concept plan.
No, no, it's not them, it's in case something should happen and they start to dig and they find out it's not feasible for them to continue based on conditions and they sell the property and someone else comes in. Which is not unrealistic.
Do you want to continue going through?
Yes.
Reminding us where we are?
Yeah, I do know where we are. So we're at the bottom of page two. The second to last whereas clause really talks about the composition, material composition of the building as proposed through the concept plan. And that's an important description because it adheres to the requirements in the legislation for green building products, materials. The last whereas clause on page two runs for several pages from page two to most of page six. That is a recitation of all of the documents that have been received related to this application from everything that you've looked at, that the applicant has submitted, that town staff and consultants have provided, that help you render your decision. Okay, so this is, everything that has been submitted is reflected in, on these several pages. On the bottom of page six, there was a change that was pointed out to me, the second to last whereas clause, the tau should be town, we need to add an N. The last whereas clause talks about the secret and the environmental assessment and materials that the town received, our notice that we gave, the circulation of that notice of intent to involved and interested agencies. And then on the top of page seven is a whereas clause that reviews and cites the letters and memos we received in response to the lead agency notice or the comments from our interested and involved, our interested agencies. You are the only involved agency. On page seven, second whereas clause is a recitation of the public hearing dates. The next whereas clause talks about how you considered comments from the public and written comments, both verbal and written comments. And then there's a recitation of your September 12 meeting and your, your setting of the written comment period after the close of the public.
Sabrina, there's just one change on the second whereas clause after the date to the public hearing. Additional written comments are until noon on October 2nd.
Yes, you are correct, thank you, Lisa. Okay.
And I would add noon in there as well.
Okay, thank you. Following that whereas clause, it's a recitation that this action is considered, adoption of the legislation is considered an unlisted action. And then this is, the next whereas clause really talks about seeker 61177C and the requirements of your, your need to comply with the secret regulations. And the recitation at the bottom of page seven and the top of page eight, probably just beyond half, is taken directly from the secret statute. The second to last, or actually the last whereas clause is where you make your environmental determination after looking at the record, what it consisted of, the full environmental assessment form as revised throughout the process. And you made, this is where you make your determination that there is no potential significant adverse environmental impact. And then the next resolved clause, now therefore hereby resolved, that is talking about the concept plan, the completion of the forms and preparing an environmental impact statement is not required. You have a further resolved at the bottom of page eight, the top of page nine, that talks about attaching the negative declaration where you have had reasoned determination that there is no significant impact. And then there's a further resolved that's just performa, there's no significant environmental impact. And then the last resolved talks about the concept plans.
Sabrina, Holly just pointed out to me on the bottom of page eight, it is further resolved that, right under that, boards should be apostrophes.
Yep, thank you. And that's it for this resolution. And then what would be attached to this resolution is the negative declaration that has the concept plans attached.
Any questions for Sabrina? Or Eric?
On this resolution.
I'm sorry?
On this resolution.
Yes. Okay.
You ready to move on to the next one?
Yes.
Okay, this one's a little bit different. This is a potential adoption of the NG zero special permit. So with this resolution, if this resolution is adopted, the legislation that you have been looking at will be filed with New York State to then go into. Sorry?
No, we're just telling her what page.
Oh, okay, there's nine pages with this resolution as well.
Okay.
All right, the first page is there.
Yeah, it says five on the top, right?
Thank you.
The first page, very similar to the secret resolution, really talks about the application, the same whereas clauses and a list of the special characteristics of the special permit, which are embroiled into the legislation that are part of this adoption. If you flip the page, the next whereas clause refers to the general conditions and standards that are applicable to all special permits. This is what Eric, you were referring to.
That was, that's. It's the, I mean, I'm not sure any of your agenda because I don't have the pack in front. So second page of the resolution, right under, you know, it starts, it refers to section 60 dash 420B, one through five, which is what I was referring to previously.
Should be page 69, at the top right corner. Yeah, I was confused.
All right.
That was not very important.
Sixty nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of those, this stuff is not, there's no arriving there.
Right, that's what.
I might as well do my forgot one, you know, all of this.
So sixty eight, sixty eight.
Sabrina, not to be mean, but my name is Miss Nellis. There's no P in Ally.
So sixty eight's the first page, sixty nine's the second page and it's the first whereas clause.
Thanks for pointing that out, Ally.
And actually, I mean, is that supposed to be our legal name?
It's on both of them.
Yep, I know.
Yeah, Alexandra probably is not appropriate.
I should probably say Alexandra.
Just saying.
Make my mom happy.
Hey, it's important.
Is that how you spell Ally though?
Two L's and a Y.
Okay, moving on, thank you for the change. In the middle of the page, it talks about the proposed zoning and the attached concept plan and how that was reflected, it was intended to be reflective of what the legislation was talking about. The next whereas clause speaks to the fact that there's no other properties that are eligible for application of the NG special permit and that the legislation contains provisions that are tailored to reflect the essential features, characteristics, exterior dimensions and articulation of the proposed building and site layout as depicted in the concept plan. And that again is another kind of input into this resolution to provide some assurances that you're going to get what you're asking for.
Sabrina, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to take a step back. The first resolution we looked at was a resolution regarding the secret process, the secret.
Negative declaration.
Negative declaration. So this resolution is pertaining to the legislation itself.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first resolution, the first resolution adopts the negative declaration, formally adopts the negative declaration. Right, and this, this one adopts the legislation, it formally adopts.
So temporally.
Can I ask them at the same time?
You have to do the secret first and then the, then the other one, then the, then the legislation next.
Okay, I just wanted to establish the structure.
Sorry, Sabrina.
No, no, it's okay, I was gonna say the same thing. So you're going to see in the legislation, a lot of the same whereas clauses in this resolution that were in the negative declaration because we're talking about the same thing. The next whereas clause on the bottom of page two talks about the green building components that are reflective of the requirements of the legislation. The.
And let me just point out, Sabrina, so we said, you know, the concept plan enabled you to really get a sense of the, you know, what the legislation would permit, what it would allow. So that was sort of the underlying reflective nature of the concept plan. But you're, you know, to get an understanding of how the legislation would be implemented, that I think is important for you to understand, so.
And then, no, thank you, Eric. And then at the bottom of page two, there's a whereas clause that talks about if there's an alternative development plan, it would also have to be a high performance net zero carbon emission building, meeting all of the environmental standards as outlined in the NG zero special permit legislation determined by the town board. Again, an effort to really put the responsibility on the town board, it is your decision through the special permit. The top of page three includes a whereas clause of the application that was initially presented to you, the 42 units. It starts with the 42 units and then we talk about the 52 parking spaces and then talks about what the original application was. The next whereas clause talks about the original allocation of the affordable housing in the legislation as represented in the concept plan. Then we go through the history at this time of receiving your full environmental assessment form and all other materials and reports that compile your record. And the same listing is contained in this resolution from page three of the resolution, I'm not sure of your number, through page seven. At the top of page seven, it talks about the first meeting with the applicant where you worked on this project. Then we go through a reflection of your intent to be lead agency.
Sabrina, you have to board again, the second where, if you're taking notes.
I, yes, I am taking notes. I have the official version of this resolution at the moment. Then we talk about the involved and interested agencies as in the secret resolution. The same, you know, during the course of the review, you received letters and correspondence from the interested agencies and then your recitation of your public hearing process. And then we, this one says October 2nd, it does not.
Does just add noon.
Yep. You're considering the comments and then the bottom of page seven is a whereas clause where the applicant, in response to public concerns regarding construction of luxury residence. Where the applicant in response to public concerns regarding construction of luxury residences submitted revised floor plans. That incorporated. The inclusion of studio residential dwelling units. It talks about the revised plan with fifty units of housing. And the breakdown of the square footage and the number of bedroom units, the units and their number of bedroom. Um that you are now looking at that are included in the concept plan. It all, the next on the top of page eight, I'm not sure what page it is of yours, but the next page. There's a, a discussion of the affordable housing and due to the change in the number of units, the applicant committed to twenty percent. Of the fifth, of affordable housing and the breakdown of the number of AFFH versus workforce units. The following whereas clause um on October XX, that's if you, that's the date that will need to be filled in when you adopt this legislation. It taught, or, or when you adopt the seeker resol- resi- resolution. That's where we put that date because this whereas clause talks about the seeker determination. Then there is a therefore be it resolved, which talks about creating the special permit and adding it to. The town. Building code um under section sixty dash four thirty.
Yep.
Um, and then there's another resolved. Um, talking about the benefits of the affordable and workforce housing. And then there's further resolved, which accidentally, actually recites what the concept plan says. Right? So at the bottom of page eight, the be it further resolved has. One, A through G, those are all special. Legislative requirements that are uh exemplified in the concept plan. Number two talks about any other plan. Complying with the negative declaration, um and then that. The top of page nine is a recitation of. Findings of the negative declaration which require additional analysis. As recognized through your negative declaration. And then the last be it further resolved talks about your discretion. To um accept or deny material changes. Eric.
Last clause, the last clause is the one we, that I discussed in detail. It's sort of, we wanted to reference it in the legislation to provide some additional. Comfort for the, for the, for the town board that, you know, if there is any material change, you, you know, you have the authority, even though the legislation is there. When you review the special permit, you have the authority to um. Make discretionary determinations with respect to the underlying special permit application, which is, you know, which, we, we put it in there, it's not necessary, but we just wanted to make sure it was clear for everybody that it's uh, that you have that authority.
So just for my, I, I asked Lisa, I want to make sure everyone heard my question. I was asking about items A through I, when we would get those additional requi- those, the additional analysis, so. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that would come during site plan review and then. When, do those get attached to something and at what?
You will get a site plan application with maps, details and reports that address those items.
Okay, and it would be before any building permit was issued? And would that be before they grow ground on us?
Uh, it depends on what the find, it depends what the findings are.
Okay.
Okay, so, so it depends on what they submit in regards to the application. It depends on when things need to be conducted. You know, you, you, you don't necessarily do um extensive groundwater analysis in a project until you're, until you're at a burnt building permit stage. You know, you do preliminary analysis.
Right.
So um it will be broken down based on. The information provided at site plan application that will give enough assurances. That what has been conceptualized can move forward and be built.
Thank you.
Sabrina, on, on the top of page eight, the first full whereas clause, five lines down. Newcastle Kick Town Board, the board needs a capital B.
Thank you.
Second to last, uh word on the line. Yeah, I'm telling you, Ally's uh wizard this.
Awesome.
All star, proofreading. So um with the July seventeenth submission of the revised floor plans with the um, you know, fifty new units with the addition of the studios and um. You know, the ten affordable housing units being twenty percent, so we have not put that in the legislation. Correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So what, I mean, what is the thinking? I would think that we have accepted this revised plan. That's what they. You know, agreed to do, and I would think we would revise the legislation. Because that's what we want, so.
I have the same question.
I, I would like to do that. I just want to get a sense of what. The rest of the board would like to do.
Was there any particular, yeah, so. That, you, you can certainly do that. You'd have to reopen the, because there's a change, you have to reopen the public hearing to, to make that change to the legislation.
But because that's considered substantial.
But it's a substantial change to the legislation.
But, but wait, but we discussed that during the public hearing.
I know, but it was never formally submitted as part of the legislation that you had this increase in affordable.
Well, now that's still your problem.
Well, but let me, let me, let me tell you what the thinking is when, when we, when we analyzed it and then, you know.
I thought that too, Vicky. Why did we not, and then know that? Yeah, okay, okay, I'll listen.
Well, look, I came in at the end and I was, you know, I, but it never got in there, never, no, no, it never got in there for one, but we did discuss why.
No, 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 please, no, please, it's not your problem, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
The benefits of it not being in there and the reason it would got in there was because they increased the number, they determined they increased the number of units to fifty and therefore they could go to a higher level of affordable workforce housing. The issue is if you have a lower number of unit um development. That may not, the twenty percent may not work for a lower number of unit of development. Then you, therefore you're restricting certain developers economically from being able to come in here. This gives you at least some leeway. You could say, look, in this concept plan, when you have fifty units, we wanted, we wanted this number of affordable housing, we think it's appropriate.
Wait, but why would that, why would that restrict other develop, this is um, you know, just for this property, just for fifty north, really?
Right.
So why would that restrict other developers?
Because you're, be, because you're restricted, because if somebody comes in with a plan that's a lower number of units. That might not be economically feasible to develop twenty percent affordable, for this property, right?
For this property.
In your scenario, Vicky, that, that it gets sold and somebody else comes in.
Yeah. We wouldn't want to hold them.
And let's say they're building a smaller building that's only forty two units, so not gonna hold them to the twenty percent.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
But, but to, to Vicky's point, I believe in the stadium, please correct me. Even though it's not here, we nevertheless can hold them to that requirement.
We would say, yes, I would say a hundred percent. That's part of the concept plan. We're adopting this based upon their representation that it's gonna, and if they lower it under the twenty percent, I think that's a. Valid basis unless they can show some, you know, real economic change, why they can't do it. Again, you know, I'm just trying, I can't, I can't cover every single possibility. But let's say interest rates again go up to fifteen percent now and they're dealing with a completely different economic situation. You may say. Alright, under those circumstances, we can't hold you to the twenty percent. But I'm saying for this, if nothing's changed, you know, nothing's changed materially, you can hold them to the twenty percent for this company.
Well, but in that situation, we may say, okay, just do forty two units and, and at the twelve percent, right?
Yeah, you may say you have to reduce the number, yeah, yeah, you don't have your fifty, yeah, exactly. I think that would be the exact situation.
And that would be up to us to decide that in our discretion.
Right, I, mm-hmm, exactly. So that's, that's how we came to, you know, this issue was raised and I certainly think, I think it's a very valid argument about why it should be, and I know.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
You know, there was public comment about why it should be in there, but this gives you some discretion and, you know, certainly. I would make, be a, you know, my legal opinion would be, be able to hold them to the twenty percent that they, unless there is some really material change in economics.
Yeah, I mean.
I think, you know, it's represented in the resolution. It is. In multiple places, so.
So if they came back and said, you know what, we still want fifty units, but we only want to put in twelve percent, you'd say, you, you know, that's a real, you know, that's a. That's a change that we're not going to allow to, to occur in approving this application, so.
Alright, any other questions? Okay. Alright, um, is there anything else with this Sabrina that you wanted to go over?
No, I think I'm set. I'm here if you have any questions. If you guys read through the information after and you have questions, I'm available to help answer them for you. If you find any more editorials, they're always welcome.
And in the neg deck, we tried to also, you know. Ask slightly some information with each of the categories as to why the legislation, why the development as permitted by the legislation and not necessarily the concept plan would, would satisfy all these environmental requirements. So, you know, and that any future development would also have to be the same standards in order to get approved, or else you'd have to go through a whole new secret process as we've discussed.
Alright.
Okay.
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 Thank you, Sabrina.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye. Alright, so now we are moving on to the um. Resolution declaring Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, so. If you all will recall, it's on page eighty six. Um, if you all will recall, last time um we talked about this last meeting, you know, Ally brought up. Kind of the, the, the history of how Columbus Day first came into being. And we sort of added it into this. Um, and as long, as well as Holly's comments that you had are also um incorporated here. There's a, a red line. Oh, and a clean, they're both in here, um of the, of the resolution in the packet. Um, so I thought we'd just open that up to comment.
So I sent an email to, to you guys, um but after I thought about it a little bit more and then read how it actually played out. I kind of, I, I don't really feel comfortable having the reference to the origin of Columbus Day or the phrase Columbus Day in. Um, in the resolution itself. I don't have any objection um to discussing it or acknowledging um the. The contributions of Italian American immigrants or the, a tragedy that happened.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just think that I feel more comfortable after thinking about it, having it separate from Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. Um, perhaps considering looking at an Italian American heritage mug or, or some other type uh, a way that we can acknowledge it. Um, without conflating it with Columbus Day, since I think. When we started talking about Indigenous Peoples' Day, the idea was to kind of move away from honoring Columbus itself.
Right, I mean, I don't think this honors Columbus at all. It even says, you know, the painful legacy of Christopher Columbus.
I understand, I, I just, I, I didn't want to, I, I thought it's better not to include them.
I thought the same thing and I made that point in our, in last week, that. I felt strongly that comments needed to be made about the history of Columbus Day and actually if the people. Reached out to me and said that they really appreciate that and didn't know themselves, which a few of us in this room said that, right?
Yeah.
And I think also having. Jeremy said, you Google it and the first hit that comes up is whitehouse.org. Joe Biden, President Biden. Passed a resolution acknowledging the history of Columbus Day last year, um which was a surprise to me, so. I agree, I don't know if. If, if everybody feels strongly that combining them is not the right place, I'm open to your thoughts about how we can incorporate because I do think, it, it is important. I do think it is important to. If, if we're constantly talking about history and the record, if we're making sure that. We understand and embrace, you know. A, a real telling, a reckoning of, of our country's history. I think that's important that that piece is, is included in some way and that is.
Right, you can't just erase it.
Beyond me saying we need to acknowledge Christopher Columbus. You and I are in agreement.
Completely, I mean.
Yeah, I just don't, I, I feel like the purpose of the Indigenous Peoples' Resolution should be separate and apart from.
Do you think we could have two, two resolutions, the same way that the White House did last year?
The White House resolution, I thought was a total punt.
It was.
They basically said, we declare October tenth to be Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then the next resolution, we declare October tenth to be Columbus Day. I thought that was ridiculous and in my view, you, you don't. You're declaring it one day if you want to acknowledge um the history of Columbus Day, which I think we should. I, I don't know, I'm open to figuring out how to do that, but I, I think doing what President Biden did and declaring the same day, two different days is really like, I don't want to upset anybody, so I'm just gonna. Make everybody happy, which to me is not getting there.
I agree, the same day was not, I'm so, I'm hoping.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna say something, can I, no, so. Part of what I have to say is really a question, but about the history. So first of all, I want to say that this was incredibly edifying to me. And I'm really glad you brought it up. And I was totally in favor of you saying something. I still think you should say something separately and. Um, I agree that we should do something. We should, you know, the whole point is to rectify history and history is always changing. There are things that we don't know and we should acknowledge historical injustices done to every group. So I think that's really important. Um. Now, when I think of Indigenous Peoples' Day. The purpose of that is to acknowledge. The history and impact of colonialism on the indigenous people. Um, and I think the way this is worded, that kind of gets lost at the bottom. And the second thing I'm wondering, and this is really a historical question. Was Columbus Day declared. Simp, to honor the Italian Americans who experienced violence or was it. Declared to appease them, to appease, not honor. To appease them by honoring Columbus.
Well.
So, so, so here's the, here's the.
I think you'd have to ask President Harris.
If, if we really think about the subtlety of that. Putting Indigenous Peoples' Day in the context of. The history of what happened to the Italian immigrants, is, isn't really what President.
Harris.
Harrison did. He didn't do it to honor them. He did it to appease them. And he did it to honor Christopher Columbus. So I think, I think if we go back to the original wording, we would really be addressing what's wrong. With Columbus Day and acknowledging the indigenous people. Because Columbus Day was really meant to honor Christopher Columbus.
Well, I, I can speak to the intentions, right?
He, he didn't do it to acknowledge. Yeah.
I would argue that at the time in the eighteen, eighteen ninety two. There was a lot of anti-immigrant sentiment. Italian Americans were overwhelmingly coming into this country, probably a lot of that.
There's still a lot of.
Was directed at them specifically.
Yeah.
And I think probably, I am assuming. Was intended to appease a, a population of people. As an Italian American. How my family chose to acknowledge the day was to honor overlooked and I think this, I think this, I'm speaking now for. For what I have grown to see is the, the, the meaning of the holiday. It was never about Christopher Columbus. It was about honoring Italian American contributions because there's no other day that does. There's no other acknowledgement. And why it's important to me that we recognize is to not take away from indigenous people and the injustices that they suffered as a result of colonialism. So I'm open to separating the two or finding a way where we could do both because I don't want to water down. I, I mentioned it last week. I had comments and I had added them to the resolution because I wasn't sure that that was the right place. But I do, and so I, I want to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day, but I also. Have to acknowledge that there was gross injustice, prejudice. Lynching, it's the worst lynching in the history, you know, what, single lynching, I mean, eleven people. Um, so I think that is important that we find a way to acknowledge that history as well. So it, it's unfortunate that the title was Columbus Day and now we've had a reckoning of Martin Christopher Columbus, but. I don't want. The meaning of the day for many Italian Americans and people who trace their ancestry back to Italy through Ellis Island and that experience. I don't want that to get lost because it's Columbus Day, so.
So I have an idea. So, October, the month of October is Italian American Heritage and Culture Month. So, what if in this resolution we. You know, if not, we, you know, declared that October is Italian American Heritage and Culture Month. And in the same resolution, say, October tenth. Which we historically know as Columbus Day, we're declaring Indigenous Peoples' Day because of, like, you can have two together. You can have Italian American Heritage Month and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um.
I think there's separate resolutions.
Why, why don't we just have a, we can do them as separate resolution, no, no, I'm saying, we can do it as separate resolutions and, yes, that's what I'm saying, declare.
On Indigenous Peoples' Day. We, we said the same resolution.
I, I didn't mean that. I'm, I'm saying, why don't we declare October as. I I didn't mean that, I'm de- I'm saying, why don't we declare October as we've done before, right? We declare Pride Month, we declare months, let's declare October as Italian American Heritage Month in the town of Newcastle.
Sure.
And at the same time, I don't think it it flies in the face, we can declare October tenth
In a separate resolution.
to be, right, by same time, I'm being not, doesn't have to be in the same resolution.
No, I got it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I don't, uh, you know, declare that as Indigenous Peoples' Day and I don't think that's then doing what Biden did where he declared the same day, two different things, I think we're acknowledging the month and then we're also acknowledging the day.
So you wanna declare, um, you know, uh, October tenth Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Yeah, I agree, same. October tenth.
I mean, it's usually October ninth, nationally, it's October ninth. Or it's the second Monday.
Yeah, I don't remember what we all.
Or it's um, it's not October ninth, but it coincides with the second.
It's. It's second Monday in October, which this year is October ninth.
This year is October ninth.
Right.
So we just said second Monday in October.
That's what it says, that's what it says, it says it.
So it it would be.
Second, okay.
It would be October ninth.
Declare the second Monday in October is Indigenous Peoples' Day to be observed annually beginning October ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Right, 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 I see, okay.
That's what it says, I'm the resolution.
Right, so then we'll have a resolution for the month of October as Italian American Heritage Month.
Correct. Right. And then at the same time, we can adopt this resolution.
Revolution.
This, yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
So, but this resolution, you know, the wording should be changed to what it was originally.
I like.
It's gonna be changed back, but with Holly's comments. Changing the um, just changing, making peoples plural and then changing the uh
With, nothing to do with Italians.
Right.
Yes.
The whereas clause just about um the history with um, that it traces its name to the Native American tribes, we change the wording a little bit on that, it's marked in the in here.
Okay.
So I would make that change and the plural and the art, yep, that's in there too, right, I added that.
Additional art. I think it was nice.
I added that, didn't I?
Yes, sir, no, I was really thoughtful, including us.
Yes, okay. Yes, there it is. Um, so put it back to that, but with these changes and then we can adopt another resolution declaring the month of October. The only thing is, oh, well, we can wait, we can adopt this next week.
Yeah, we'll we'll do them both on October third, it's fine.
Yeah.
Perfect, yeah.
Okay. So we'll do both on October third, which is what I meant by the same time, but I didn't mean the same resolution.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to be clear, we wanted to put it in the same.
Yep. Yep. Okay, so I I, we can redo that.
Full disclosure.
Okay, so let's do that, does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah, I think that's a really great compromise, thank you, Melissa.
Perfect. Perfect, okay.
Thank you for bringing bringing that up.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for being open minded, I really appreciate it.
Jill, do you wanna go through the rest?
Yes, I do, um, let's see. We've got uh payment of claims, we've got authorization to purchase fire alarm components, which is gonna be crazy, six thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, this is from Alco Protection. Uh, it's just, for the record, the entire cost of these fire alarm components with installation should be fifty-three thousand and change, but we're saving the installation because we got an in-house electrician and yeah, we know it's like, we're just.
It's amazing.
Yay, saving money.
Yeah. Um, authorization to accept our proposal for holiday lights, yay, thank you so much, baby.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or Ally and Dennis, that's the case maybe.
Can we make sure that no one gets, um.
Yes, 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 yes.
Oh, we Dennis might have disgusted at once.
Yes, they will. Yes.
I've already told 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 Bart that his guys are relieved from.
Thank you, yes. And I promised that before I moved to no one, so it's nothing to do with.
Yes.
Well, we're gonna try and hopefully second time's the charm.
Okay. Right.
Um, and that's for sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And unfortunately, our uh Drive Electric Westchester event was rained out on nine twenty-three, so they're asking for revised resolution to allow them to use town property on um October fourteenth and hopefully the rain holds.
Oh, my, no rain.
All right.
No rain, no rain.
And there's nothing, is there anything else that day?
No, there's, it it appeared the calendar was filled.
Okay.
All right, so do you enjoy your work sessions in town, hold me?
Yes, uh, is there such anything else?
Yes.
I'm just trying to, hang on, is there anything else?
I'm just trying to ask Jill one question, I didn't have the amount, so it's over twenty thousand.
Do you need, can you close the work session?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, you can close it.
Okay. Um, do you make a motion?
We need to close the work session.
Uh, yeah.
I just need to close the work session.
On the work session, yeah. Close the work session, close.
Yeah.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we are adjourning to the other room, to the assembly room and we will meet you in there for uh our town party.
Uh, good evening, everybody, for the fourth time today, um, let's welcome you now to our public uh meeting of Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, can I have a motion to open the public meetings?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are gonna start with some announcements, just a few quick ones, they'll all be in the town newsletter. But this Saturday, so for those of you who weren't tuning in earlier, Clifford joined us uh early in the meeting um to commemorate the tenth anniversary of the Chappaqua Children's Book Festival, which will be held this Saturday, rain or shine, hopefully no rain, uh from ten to four in the train station. It is gonna be bigger and better than ever, I urge you all to attend, even if you don't have little kids, you will find something to read. And uh it's a fabulous event, so please make sure to come to that. And then if that's not enough, the next day on Sunday, you can see Pinkalicious at um Chappaqua Performing Arts Center. The one o'clock show is sold out, but I believe there's still tickets for the three-thirty show. Um, again, that is in the newsletter, how to get those tickets. And there's still some spots left o- left for the Scarecrow Building Festival that is gonna be also on Sunday from one to four at the train station, it's always a lot of fun. I love seeing um the scarecrows people build and then afterward as they're all creepily dumped into the truck and tripping around town. But I urge you to come to that, especially if you have, if you have young kids. Um, and then one more, on October first, there will be a Pride Not Prejudice event um from three to four o'clock at the Chappaqua Library and you can mix, mingle, enjoy cider and donuts while meeting the Newcastle LGBTQ plus committee um and other like-minded individuals. So those are all my announcements, they'll all be in the supervisor's report, uh so stay tuned, it's gonna be a busy, busy weekend. Um, in terms of community corner, I just wanted to wish a happy seventh birthday to Noah Kujak and a happy twelfth birthday to Dylan Seltzer. Um, now we're gonna just move to the town administrators' report, anything you wanted to add?
Lauren.
What?
Yes, so school tax bills are due, uh if you, as opposed to your bank, are responsible for paying your taxes, um taxes are due without penalty by Monday, October second. The tax office will be open Monday um from seven AM to seven PM. Payments can also be made online using our online payment system. And as always, the Dropbox is available in the lobby, um which is open twenty-four seven. Uh, please, you can also postate your checks and if you do decide to mail your checks, uh please make sure you witness an official US postmark.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
And please get them in on time because we are very limited with um our ability to waive any tax penalties, like very, very limited. So please get them in on time. So no one's disappointed. All right, uh, anything else, Jill?
No, I was just gonna plug the fire department, Chappaqua Fire Department, they're having their fire prevention open house on Sunday, the first from eleven to two, so on top of everything else that you go do, go visit the firehouse, they're always fun and uh uh help, neighbors helping neighbors since nineteen ten, so.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, all right, so now we're gonna open it up to any uh public comment or new business. Is there anyone here who has public comment or new business? All right, is there anyone online who has a hand raised for public comment or new business?
No hands are raised online.
Okay. All right, then we are just gonna move to our resolutions and our consent agenda items, unless you all would like to stay here longer.
Okay.
Maybe Jeremy should.
All right, so I moved it out.
Come here.
Yeah, all right, I I moved it out, item one to six, let's listen to the contend- agenda below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of Philip Miss- Miss Radon to the position of fourth grade police officer within the Newcastle Police Department at a minimums, at an annual salary of seventy-seven thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars, seventy-six cents effective October thirtieth of this great year or the date Western County approves resignation reinstatement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And welcome to town.
I move to authorize proportion of steam and power from the position of labor division of motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Works Highway to an annual salary of sixty-nine thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars, twenty-five cents effective October second in the year of our supervisor, Lisa Katz, two thousand twenty-three.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to authorize the posting and hiring to the position of labor within the Department of Public Works Highway Unit at the annual salary of fifty thousand one hundred nineteen dollars to sixty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars, seven cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the posting of hiring in the position of heavy motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Works, uh Public Works Highway Unit at the annual salary ranging from sixty-four thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars, sixty-two cents to eighty-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred eighty-five and forty-four cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I move to accept the resignation of Larry Lewis, co-chair of the Committee on Race Equity and Inclusion, otherwise known as C R E I. Effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, the town would sincerely like to thank you for all your service.
Can I clarify, is he just stepping down as chair or resigning from the committee?
From the committee.
Both.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I I I would just like to thank Larry so much for his service on the committee.
Absolutely.
All right, anyone? Or shall I continue?
No, someone else go, he's giving it out.
Can we go? I move to authorize the appointment of Porforio Gonzoitz as co-chair of the Committee on Race Equity and Inclusion for the remainder of his term effective through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the appointment of Mike Corso as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Board for a two-year term effective October first, twenty twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as well as the appointment of Lexie Marshall as a student member of the Sustainability Advisory Board for a one-year term effective retroactively to August first, twenty twenty-three through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Lately Platt and Schmidt LLP for general municipal services and attendance at board at meetings for the fixed monthly retainer amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, as well as the blended billing rate of two hundred and sixty-five dollars per hour for special projects, labor matters and litigation for an initial term of four months, beginning October first, twenty twenty-three through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. With the option of renewal for an additional term of one year upon mutual written agreement. That's it?
Is that it?
Yes.
I need a second.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and we're gonna hold off on the resol- the other resolution until next week.
Yes.
Um, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.